Welcome to our question and answer on the budget. We're very pleased that you're joining us because the budget process is all around talking to as many people as we can and to ensuring we get as many inputs into the process that we can, because after all, it is a very large budget we're talking about. And we want to make sure that we're doing what our residents in particular want us to do with their money. So this is a virtual question and answer session, and I'm really lucky to have with me today Richard Wehman, who is in charge of money, basically. Richard?
Thank you, Glenn, thank you.
And also Jan Willis, who is our chief finance officer and therefore holds the purse strings to our budget. And together, we're going to answer as many questions as we can fit in. Before we do that, I would like to just do a quick recap on what we've been doing so far with the budget process. So the budget is based solely on our vision, which is Northumberland is a land of great opportunities. Northumberland not only has all its rich history, its coast, its castles, its uplands, this lovely farming countryside that we see and enjoy so much, but it also has an incredible hub of technology in and around the port of Blyth, which is a world leader in renewable energy now, and what we do with the power and the source of the power, and how we then train on people to pick up the skills that are needed to work within that really important and increasingly important industry. So it is a land of great opportunities, Northumberland, so we are basing our budget on that, but principally, we base our budget on three priorities. The first one is around value for money, which means that we want to make sure we spend your money on those things that are important to you. Secondly, to support business and encourage jobs, and that is why we are investing so heavily across the county in new investment in our towns and villages. And thirdly, we want to ensure that we do all we can to tackle inequalities, to listen to the people who need help the most, but as well as that, radically improving and increasing the amount of skills training that we're doing across the county, thus allowing people to pick up a job, which will then move to a future and motivation for people who currently are not in work and who may really appreciate and benefit from those extra skills. Next slide, please. So the budget engagement so far has included a whole range of different things. We began in June last year by having a number of meetings. We had what are called policy conferences in County Hall for members of all different parties to discuss the budget. We've had a public consultation online and in print, and I understand that we've had hundreds of responses, which is great, so thank you for that. And we've also had a number of other meetings in County Hall. I've had a meeting with businesses. We've talked to local parish and town councils. And this takes us to where we are today with this question and answer session. Next slide, please. So what options do we have for achieving what's called a balanced budget? In other words, we're not going to spend more than we have, and how are we going to make sure we achieve value for money for residents? So the first thing is that we must make the case to government for funding for all the things that we do to make sure that we can get the money that we need in order to provide the services that you want us to do. Now, it's sometimes a challenge, but we are proud that we have had so much money from the current government. We've got more money coming into Northumberland, I understand, than at any time in the history of Northumberland County Council, and that's going to benefit a wide range of different towns and villages and, of course, residents. So we must make sure we use those grants sensibly, that will generate income, we will run our business efficiency efficiently, and we will use our County Council reserves where we need to and where it's wise and prudent to do so. So for example, we will not be touching our general fund reserves, but we will be using that money that we've been able to put aside over the last few years to match fund and deliver on all the range of things that we want to deliver for a long-term future benefit for the county. Next slide, please. The background to our spending is there, I hope you can read that, but it does show, for example, that adults in particular are one of our biggest areas of spend, along with education and all of those things that include the frontline services like grass cutting, roads, litter, and so on. Next slide, please. So within the proposals, we've looked at a whole range of efficiencies, we've looked at a whole range of new spending, and that involves those key service proposals, which are enabling services, which basically means how do we run the business, how we buy things and how we sell things, and how we try and encourage as many local businesses to do work for us. And I'm glad to say that actually, we have considerably increased the amount of local suppliers and local spend. Adults are very important and actually a large part of the work we do now. We know that Northumberland has an increasing percentage of older people over 65, and that's good because they bring a whole range of life skills and so on, but we also have to make sure that we have the provision and the right provision to meet their needs. Children, young people and education, we're very proud of the fact that we've got 94% of our schools that are rated either good or outstanding by Ofsted. That's a tremendous achievement for the pupils themselves, but also for the staff, for our teams at County Hall and so on. Public health inequalities, stronger communities, that's all around, making sure that we do all we can, particularly in those areas where there is a high level of deprivation in our county, to make sure that everyone gets the same opportunity as life. And that is something that's important to this administration, and we are making real progress on that. Then finally, place is around all those things that we see, feel, touch, and enjoy. That's why we've introduced our new environment policy, which brings in a range of new spend to create more green space, to pick up more litter along major roads, to ensure that we are still maintaining our focus and our impetus on climate change and the work that we're doing within there. And regeneration means all that money that is coming in, that is being spread across the county in building up town centres and building up a better life for residents. Now, we've had a whole range of questions in, and thank you for those. The first one is from John in Pontyland. He says, "I can see Northumberland County Council is moving forward positively financially in the coming year. How confident do you feel the budget delivery will strengthen Northumberland in the years to come?" If I take this first, I do feel very strongly that the budget that we are doing as the one that we agreed last year does make Northumberland stronger. We are very careful about how we invest your money and government's money and the projects in which we deliver those monies. But we are careful to invest in those areas where we will see more jobs, more opportunities. So for example, our school's programme is already underway. We've just begun a super school in Seton Valley. We will be looking next at Amble, where plans are already being drawn up for a similar super school, and there are also plans for Berwick. We've just opened a new leisure centre in Morpeth to join the other leisure centres across the county, and we're very pleased with the take-up that we're having in Morpeth and also in Berwick, incidentally, where we know that far more people are using it than ever before. So having the right leisure facilities is very important, and so that is why we're investing in those. Similarly, the town centre work that we're doing across the county. And as the biggest example, I suppose, of investment is the New Northumberland Line, in which we and government have invested very heavily, but we will see this year the beginning of that service, which will connect people from Northumberland into Newcastle and beyond, and those people wishing to come to Newcastle from beyond and Newcastle back into our county. It should, and I hopefully will, provide a brand-new efficient service that will run with trains every two hours, two trains every hour, and it will also provide a really convenient set of stations that will be there for people to use. And in addition to that, it will save huge amounts of CO2 by taking people out of cars and encouraging them to use rail, which is really important to us. So I would say to John, I'm really confident that the money we are investing is investing in Northumberland to make it stronger for all those towns and communities across the county, but also for all residents as well. So the second question is from Jennifer from Ashington. Will something be done with the Ashington Portland Park site? Richard?
Thank you very much, Glenn, and thank you, Jennifer, for your question. So let me just touch on, first of all, the huge amount of work that's happening in Ashington more widely. We've got the new college that has around about £45 million worth of investment that we've helped secure from the Department of Education. That will be on the Wansbeck Business Park, just near Advancer's offices. We have the station on the Northumberland Line, represents probably in terms of spend in Ashington, a 20 or so million pounds invested into Ashington Town Centre. We've got work going on at Ashwood Business Park as well with Advanced Northumberland, and already we've seen some people move into that site after a long period of inactivity. In terms of other work in Ashington, we've managed to secure a huge amount of money, about 18 million pounds or so, from government through lobbying by the County Council as well to do work at Wansbeck Square to make sure that when you're getting off that train at Ashington Station, that you're coming into a welcoming environment. And that will also include work on Grand Corner and additional works to make sure that we complete the project more generally in terms of the landscaping and public realm that was associated with Portland Park at the start of that project. In terms of the various plots that are within Portland Park, of course, one plot is already built on by a retailer that moved in some time ago. There are two plots remaining. Some of that funding from government and some of the funding in the budget that we've been considering in a few weeks will help to build out the cinema, which has long been talked about. It's been held up, not least by COVID and interruptions to the supply chain, but it remains firmly on the agenda and will be commencing shortly. So thank you very much indeed for your question.
Good, thank you for that, Richard. So the next question is, "Why do council housing tenants get pest control free? And why should the tenants not be responsible for their own fences, for example, and other certain repairs? It would save money." The answer to that is, Northumberland County Council has a significant amount of council houses, and as with all landlord and tenant agreements, responsibility for pest control within the estate and also most repairs in and around the house and fences and so on usually tend to be the landlord's responsibility. So that is why they're done free, if you like, but actually, they're not in that sense free because council tenants pay their rent into a rent account, and it's that rent account that pays for those repairs. So it's very similar to any landlord and tenant arrangement, and that is why the services such as you've mentioned there are free. So the next question is around council tax. So a few of you have asked, "Why can't you limit council tax rises to those living in band D and above properties?" And secondly, "Why not freeze the council tax because of the cost of living?" So Jan, could you take this question, please?
Unfortunately, council tax regulations don't allow us to increase council tax for some property bands and not others, but I do think it's worth recognising that people in higher property bands, band D and above, already pay more council tax than the majority of households in the county who are in bands A to C. The council raises just over half of its revenue from council tax and the adult social care precept, so freezing council tax would have a really significant impact on our budget and undoubtedly mean that we'd have to make significant spending reductions because the council's budget is not immune from those cost of living increases and higher interest rates that everybody is having to deal with at the moment. And we have an ageing population, you know, demand for our services is increasing significantly, particularly in areas such as adults and children's social care, and we have a statutory duty to deliver those services, so we have to make sure we have sufficient funding to pay for them. Council tax increases over the last two years have been significantly below inflation. This year, in the current year, the council applied a 1% discount to all council tax bills, recognising the continuing impact of the cost of living, and the council has also provided extra support for those households that need it most and might be struggling with the cost of living through a council tax hardship fund and a HRA rent hardship fund as well. And that will continue into the next financial year. But as pay rises are now catching up with inflation and we are coming, hopefully, coming to a position where cost of living is, those cost of living increases are starting to flatten out, you know, the view is that it would not be sensible for us to be freezing the council tax at this time. And the final point I would make is that it's not, we have to consider not just the impact of freezing council tax in the coming financial year, but the cumulative impact of that, because we lose that forgone income every year and over, you know, a period of 10 years, it adds up to a very, very substantial amount of revenue.
Thank you, Jan. I think it's also worth remembering as well that it's not just the County Council that create the council tax, it's also the parish and town councils have a precept, and the Police and Crime Commissioner, for example, I think, increased that by something like, was it about 7%, I think, last year?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, so it's not just us, but remember, of course, that there is the council tax, and then there is the adult social care precept, which we also charge as an additional amount of money coming in to help our older people. The next question is, "Why should residents get involved in the budget consultation? Aren't things already agreed?" And the answer is no. We do value opinions and the voices of those people who we are working for, and that's all the residents, as well as businesses and parish and town councils and so on. That's why we've had this considerable exercise since June of talking to as many people as we can and encouraging people as much as we can to fill in the online questionnaire or get in touch with us. And a lot of people get in touch with me anyway, and the feeling that we get is that the thing that people really value are the frontline services, the things like the bins, things like grass cutting, keeping our towns and villages clean of litter. Those are the things that are really important to people, and that is why we are going to protect those frontline services, we are not going to cut them. I value our staff enormously, and we would not want to cause anything or bring about anything that would reduce those frontline services. In addition to that, people value the money that we're spending on things like new leisure centres, new schools, the new Northumberland Line. It's an incredible amount of investment that's going on at the moment in Northumberland. It's a very ambitious programme, it's one that Richard and I and the administration are absolutely committed to. So we are basically doing everything we can to make sure that the quality of life remains as it is in Northumberland and improves, where we can make that happen, but also to invest in the future, to make sure that we've got permanent development, permanent investment, that will increase jobs and increase confidence and make Northumberland an even better place than it is already. Moving on to question six, Judith from Cramlington says, "I would like to know why the cost of the brown bin has gone up again this year. Other local authorities do not charge for this service, why does Northumberland?" So we have a brown bin system in the county that collects 20 collections every year, and we are planning to increase the cost of that by 12p a collection. All the councils in what's called the LA seven, which is the seven local authority in and around, it's like Sunderland and North and South, Tyneside, Newcastle, Gateshead and so on, they all have brown bin systems, except for North Tyneside, who don't charge, but they are planning to start charging this year. The charges are all in and around £2 something per collection. So ours is different to places like Newcastle, because we have this huge, wonderful county that we try and spread the service across as much as we can, so it costs a lot to deliver this service, and that's why we are slightly more than many of others. We have checked, actually, a couple of other similar large county councils, and we know actually that we are charging less than they are. So it's a service that people like, we are sorry we have to increase the cost, but 12p for a collection will cover the extra costs that we have to pay, which is obviously inflation, staffing costs, fuel and so on. But it's a really important service that people do like, and we will continue to do the best we can to keep the price as competitive as we can. The next question is, which I'll ask Richard to answer, "Are the frontline workers going to get good pay for what they actually do on a day-to-day basis?" Richard?
Thank you, Glenn, and this is a slightly complexed area because the council only has so much influence over what the amount is that local government employees get paid. It's ultimately something that's decided invariably between the unions and the collection of people that make up the representatives of all councils across the country. What we have been able to do and are committed to is making sure not only that we pay the national living wage, which is a requirement of law, but the real living wage, which is a significantly higher level in terms of payment to employees, and that's particularly relevant, for example, to some of our care staff, to make sure that they get paid a fair wage for the work that they do and that we can attract the people that we need to into that profession and we do well as a county council in that regard. Obviously, everything that our teams do, all of our officers and frontline teams, their contribution to this council and this county is incredibly well-respected and valued by us all here at County Hall. Thank you, Glenn.
Good, thank you. The next question is Wendy from Berwick. She's emailed to ask, "How do the council go about sharing the budget around its towns and villages?" And I'll take this one, because we ensure that the frontline services, which is valued so much, are maintained across the county. We also invest across the county, so I've mentioned already the Morpeth Swimming Pool, the new leisure centre in Berwick, and lots of other things happening in and around Berwick and, of course, Wooler and Hexham and across the county, not least in Ashington and Blyth. We also want to make sure that the level of education remains as good as it is, as I said before. 94% of our schools are rated good or outstanding, and that's across the county. And also, we will continue to have free town centre car parking across the county. So those are some of the key important things that we are investing in and enabling. And I actually just had a quick look at the level of spending. In Berwick, under the previous administration, Berwick got £11 million spent on it in six years. That's gone up from 11 million to 31 million under this administration. Blyth has gone from 20 million to 40 million. Bedlington, 11 million to 16 million, including the money that's in the budget for this year. And Prudhoe, for example, is going to get something like 5 million over the coming year to 18 months on a range of initiatives, including a significant input of money into Waterworld Leisure Centre. So those are some examples of where we are investing across the county, and I hope that's been helpful, Wendy. Question nine is, "How much of the County Council budget will be spent on providing mental health services?" Richard?
Thank you, Glenn, and this is a really interesting question. It's not one that we can necessarily give an exact number in relation to, and that's because all parts of the council in one way, shape or form, influence the way that we deliver in terms of health and wellbeing. So to give an example, our family hubs will engage with people who may be suffering from some form of mental health struggles, but the same, our leisure service, the fact that we are opening new facilities that people are more engaged with them, has a significant impact in terms of health and wellbeing. We've got programmes like Heart of Blyth that are running that perhaps are a little bit more direct in terms of being able to point to them and say that there's specific delivery programmes around mental health. But as well, we do huge amounts of work with partner organisations and with the NHS, which is a significant deliverer of mental health services as well, across all of our communities alongside the GP network and so on. So we don't have an exact number, but rest assured, it's something that's incredibly important to the county council and something that we prioritise across all of our services. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, good, thank you. Next question is John from Ellington, has emailed to ask, "If you were told you had to reduce spending by 5%, what would you cut?" And I think I speak for Richard myself to say, we would not want to cut anything that affected the frontline services. We would not want to cut the investment in our environment. So for example, Ellington is close to Leinmouth, where we're spending £5 million on a long overdue clean-up of the beach there, which we have decided to pick up, which, as I say, has been sitting, getting worse with, in terms of the tide exposing old dump grounds of rubbish and waste, so we are dealing with that and we're going to be investing in that. I think what I would say is, if we had to cut spending by 5%, we would continue on the path that we're on at the moment, which is making sure that we provide the services that we provide in the most efficient way. I think there's still work to be done on that, there's still movement to make sure that we are dealing with everything that we deal with and that the whole range of services across the county, that we're doing it in the best possible way. So that is how we would do it, and we've embarked recently on something called BEST, which is around making sure that we do all of the different services in the most efficient way we can. So I think if I was to find 5%, it would be to say, let's carry on the path that we're following at the moment by tightening up on our efficiency, and I think you'd all, council taxpayers, would want us to be doing that anyway, but we would not cut back on frontline services, we would not cut back on the investment. Final question, Anne from Tyndale has asked, "What is being done about provision of affordable housing?" This is a good news story, and I can bring in Richard as well, perhaps. Basically, two years, three years ago, we committed... Basically, two years, three years ago, we committed almost £50 million to build more affordable housing, and it's not been simple because it's difficult finding sites, it's difficult making the maths add up, but in the time, over the last, I think, five years, three years, four years, we have built something like, provided with partners, 1,700 affordable homes, and we are doing more this year, using Advanced Northumberland to send homes helping us to do that, as well as building new sorts of housing like sheltered housing and housing that is dementia-friendly. So we are well on the way of achieving what we wanted to achieve in terms of delivering more affordable housing across the county. There is more to be done. We know that we need more affordable housing in some of our coastal areas, and we are working hard on that with our partners, and we have two housing providers in particular who are really good partners, and we are hopefully going to see more in the coastal areas develop soon, because we need to do that, and that is something that we will keep our foot very much on the pedal over. So thank you for that question. I hope that has provided some insight into the budget process. I'm very grateful to you both for joining this session, but most of all, thank you to all of you who've got involved, who've sent in questions. So thank you again very much indeed for joining us, and hopefully we'll see you again soon. Thank you.